We'll call the regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at four thirty P. M. To order first item on agendas, public notice, we can skip that, everybody's here. Item number two is consent agenda items, and on that I'd like to pull two point three for further discussion and approve two point one and two point two. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no, motion carries. Item two point three, city administration surplus property. Chris?
All right. Council President, councilors, before you is an i- item to surplus some city property that we have, and it's an art installation that's called Back and Forth. It used to be at the library and was decommissioned back in two thousand and two, and at the time of decommissioning, it was working improperly, and if it did work, it just made horrible noises. So when we pulled it out, it was stored in multiple facilities and eventually made its way to the water building down on Water Street. Since it's been in there, it's been exposed to mold, and the art sculpture has been submerged underwater from time to time, and now that we have sold that building, we need to move it someplace else, but we don't really have a place to store it. So we would like to accept bids pursuant to the city charter, which also includes us reaching out to potential family members of the artist, you know, with reasonable accommodations, you know, Google search and stuff like that to see if we can reach out to them. And what we're going to do is we're going to have an open period for thirty days instead of ten on the, on the city code to accept the bids and reach out to the family at the end of thirty days. If we have not received a bid and the family has not reached out to us, we would like to surplus the item.
Thank you. Any discussion on it in the council?
So I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Chris, I, if we do get some people that are interested in this, would we have any means of temporarily storing it for them to find a plan? I mean, we built a new storage facility across town in the last couple of years up by the.
We could, we could look to see and, and work with them if the timeframe, you know, I wouldn't want to store it for a year or something like that, but if reasonable accommodations, we, we can look at doing something like that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that if we would.
I'd be somewhat concerned though if it's full of mold and.
Well, the sculpture itself probably isn't full of mold, but it's been exposed to mold, and the, the wood and the sculpture has been partially submerged underwater when that building has flooded. So those are some of the issues with the sculpture, and we just want to make sure that the public is aware that there potentially is some issues with it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no, motion carries. Item number three, three point one, public hearing for noise variance for the Lamplighter Sports Bar and Grill, and that is for October second and October third, and October ninth and October tenth.
Council President, councilors, this is before you, as Lamplighter would like to do, an event in their parking lot for Oktoberfest weekends. Notice was sent out to a six foot hun- or six hundred foot radius around that property. I have received no complaints. Nicole did anything, no complaints were received, and it is just one, two hours past the allotted time on, on Friday and one hour past the allotted time on Saturday. And they'll be done by eleven, so they can get everything packed up and off the property by midnight.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Anybody like to be heard on it? If not, entertain a motion, close to hearing.
Resolution, I should say. I'll offer the resolution to close the public hearing and to work with the Lamplighter to have their noise variance for October second and third, two thousand and twenty, and October ninth and tenth, two thousand and twenty.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waived reading, close public hearing. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a row.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item three point two, public hearing on the final plot of Oak Bluff's ninth edition. Go ahead, Dave.
Community Development Director, the preliminary plat was approved by the city council at your August fourth meeting. The planning commission at their August twenty-seventh meeting unanimously recommended approval of the plat with conditions. The plat consists of five lots. Lots one and two would accommodate one twin home. Lots three and four would accommodate one single-family dwelling per lot, and Lot five would accommodate three fourplexes. That's what the developer has advised staff. In your report, there are a list of conditions that were presented and approved by the planning commission. Staff would like to maybe change the wording on some of them, so I would like to read the new conditions if I.
Go ahead, Dave.
The first is that the applicant would need to pay the plating fee of three hundred dollars. Two, they would need to provide an electronic file of the plat to the city of New Ulm in an AutoCAD two thousand and sixteen or newer format. Three, they would need to enter into a development agreement with the city for the property to be platted. Four, they would need to install a stormwater treatment facility for the area to be platted prior to the start of any building construction. And five, they would need to designate Lot five of the plat as an area subject to the community unit requirements found in section nine point oh eight subdivision three C and section nine point oh eight subdivision six of the city code. I would note that all of the lots within the plat comply with city code requirements.
Thank you, Dave.
I know, Mr. President, we have a, some people here that really want to, are very passionate and have concerns about this development, and I know they'd like to speak if you're okay with that.
Yep. It's a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard? Step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joan Schrader, and I live at fourteen oh seven Seventh North, along with my husband, Tim, and my two children. First, I'm going to read a, a letter that we wrote along with another family, the Ponsons, who live at fourteen twenty-seven North. Both of our properties have our backyards adjacent to the land in question. And after I read the letter, I have a number of things I would like to share with you. Dear New Ulm City Council, a group of Oak Bluff first edition property owners, including Joan Tammy Ponson and Tim and Joan Schrader, are requesting that the planning commission and the city council would consider our suggestions for the site development and planning of recently sold New Ulm diocese's land. We are asking that development of the land and the site planning reflect current property owner's goals to preserve or enhance property value and privacy by having the developer provide landscaping or a privacy fence. We are also requesting that the property development and site planning reflect a concern for traffic and pedestrian safety. At this point, we added another sentence. Mrs. Ponson collected over a hundred signatures from the surrounding area of people who are opposed to the, the proposed development. And then, my husband and I and Joan Tammy Ponson also signed another part to this letter. We are asking that only single-family residential homes be built on Sixth North and Seventh North, and only higher-priced homes that will preserve or enhance current property values. We are also requesting a privacy fence or privacy landscaping to be provided by the developer. We are appealing to the city council based on the value of what is good for our neighbor is good for all. And Mrs. Ponson has an amended letter with over a hundred signatures. Thank you for your neighborly consideration of our requests. Signed, Tim and Joan Schrader, Joan and Tammy Ponson.
And just with that, I, they gave me the, the list of the hundred, little over a hundred signatures, and they're all from people right in that, in that area. Go ahead.
I guess what I'd like to, to share with you is some of the reasons and the background for our concerns. Some of this involves some history going back twenty years. In the year two thousand, when the diocese originally began Oak Bluff's first edition, they, they had a, a plot of different properties that were for sale, and there were three properties that had their backyards up against the current land that we're discussing. We chose one of those. We chose actually Lot number seven on the diagram, and the reason we chose that was because we were promised by the diocese that that land would never be sold or developed. I have here a document. We don't have anything in writing. It is not part of the covenant, but I have a diagram here with my husband's writing on it, which he wrote it twenty years ago, to show that we're not making this up. And I'd like to pass that around if I may.
Yep.
Not only was this promise made to us, but it was also made to the person who bought lots eight and nine. And at that time, it was one individual who bought both of those lots. He built a home on Lot nine, and Lot eight was vacant. In the meantime, those two lots were sold. Lot nine with the home on it was sold to the Ponsons, and Lot eight was sold to Tammy and, and Mr. Fryer, Toby Fryer, and they built a home on this. And the same promise was made to them through the original owner of the, the land that was sold to them. So they also were aware of this promise from the diocese. Two or three years ago, when the diocese was going to build their new building, I walked over and talked to the bishop, and I said, you know, hi, I'm Joan Schrader. Remember me? I live in the yellow house. I'm your neighbor. And I said, I had heard that they were building a new building, and I was concerned about where that building would be located. And I reminded him of the promise that the diocese had made to us, that the land behind our house would remain green space. And he said, oh, yes, I do remember, and we're planning to put our building on the other side of Sixth Street. And I said, oh, good, and I thanked him very much, and I went back home. So the building was built, and then in the meantime, all of a sudden, in the spring, a sign goes up on the property, and the neighbors claimed that there was a for sale sign there. I don't believe I ever saw that. What I saw was sold. And so you can imagine our shock when this sold sign went up on this land, and we had no idea who bought it or what they were planning to do with it. And so the big, the big issue that we are struggling with here is a broken promise to us. And this is not a legal issue. We can't prove it because they didn't put anything in writing, but we were dealing with the Catholic Church, and we assumed that their, their word was good. And so we are basically pretty heartbroken over this, and so we are voicing our opposition to this development. Now, we realize that life goes on and up to the, go to the present time now. Here we are, and we have a new owner who probably doesn't know anything about this, but I wanted to tell everyone about this agreement that was made between us and the diocese. And it's an ethical issue. Their, their promise to us was broken, and now we're dealing with new owners of the land. So we have some other, in, in the city code, there is a statement talking about the adverse effect that multi-properies would have on the surrounding properties that already exist. And so I'd like to talk about that today. First of all, we are going to lose our privacy. And one of the reasons we chose the lot that we did, even though we paid ten thousand dollars more for this lot than we would have had we bought across the street, was because we wanted to have some privacy in our backyard. And now we are going to lose that. And so that makes us very sad. We're also going to lose our view, our enjoyment of the land behind us, the wildlife that we enjoy watching. And we're also concerned, as we stated in the letter, about the property value going down if we have multi-dwelling properties behind us. Another concern that we have is traffic. The builder is proposing twelve families in three quad units plus four more families on Seventh Street. That makes a total of sixteen families in a four point seven five acre plot, which to me is a lot. We also already have traffic issues up by us because of other developments in the area, and in particular, the high school. And so there are times during the day that we cannot get out and make a left turn on Seventh because of all the traffic. And also, the diocese's building is there too, and they have cars coming and going as well. So we're concerned about traffic. We're concerned about noise. If a quad is built behind our house, we will probably have two people's patios right up against our backyard. And since we haven't seen a picture yet of exactly what the builder is planning, we don't really know for sure. But probably two people's patios. My husband and I drove out to Cottonwood Street and looked at the quads out there so that we would have an idea of what these actually were, and they are very, very large. So those are our concerns, and we would really like to see single-family homes built along Sixth and, you know, higher-priced homes so that the proper, our property values don't go down, with perhaps a proper zone in between their backyard and ours, that the builder would put in trees, shrubs, and/or a privacy fence, so that we are somewhat compensated for the losses that we are about to endure. Does that cover everything?
Just the way I mentioned that, we weren't the only ones. People across the street were also told that they would never sell.
The people across the street, so the twin home and the houses right on the end there were told as well.
Well, the original.
The original owners were also told that the land across the street from them would never be developed. There are some homes on Seventh at the end of the block towards Highland that also have the field across from their properties as well. And they also were told, made this promise. Anything else? So Mrs. Ponson would like to say something?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Tammy Ponson, fourteen twenty-one Seventh Street North.
Talk a little closer to the mic so that people can hear you.
Yeah, I'm not good at this, so bear with me. I know what I, what I, that I can't change anything with what I say, but I know it can't change the fact that we did not get the chance to buy the four point seven five acres for the fifty thousand dollars that the developer did buy it for. It can't change the fact that though the developer's willing to sell us this section, he wants two hundred fifty thousand per acre, which we could not afford. So, you know, it's just a, like a kick, a punch in the gut that we could have, that was attainable, that we could have afforded that four point seven five acres for fifty thousand dollars, but, and I know that the city has nothing to do with that. That was through the diocese, that we never even had that chance. But that's why, I guess we're looking at asking for the privacy, for the developer to do something. So, you know, we can't change the fact that now we're going to lose our view and our privacy. We'll lose our view of the valley and the city lights when the leaves are off the trees. We not only see the valley, but also we see out to the, we do because we're at the end. So out to the west, we also see way out to the country. The fields and trees are, and I'm really, really going to miss seeing the valley, and just having the, the field behind us. The fields and the trees are so beautiful during all the seasons, even in the winter, and I hate winter, but it's very pretty up there. The view is why we bought the, the home that we bought, and that was going to be our retirement home, which it's, probably still will be, but we were expecting to be able to enjoy that view during our retirement. We enjoy the deer that are there. Sometimes we have, this summer again, we've had four bucks, and five fons, and six dollars all at one time several times. It's pretty awesome. Even though they do wreck everything, I, I will tolerate that if I have a view. And so since we're losing this unique space with the views, we are ask, I'm asking for you to consider having the developer provide a well-thought-out landscaping or privacy fence to maintain the aesthetics and privacy. I ask that, that the homeowners would have input and a final agreement on the project. I know it's probably not going to happen, but I'm just asking. As our, as one neighbor stated, just because it's R three doesn't mean it, it can't be negotiated. And another neighbor had said, just because you can doesn't mean that you have to. So I guess that's all. I mean, I, I was going to go off to talk about, like, we never, we, it would have been a perfect place for a park, and we're just losing that. And you don't have any, I mean, I, we have no say in that, but it would have been a very, the perfect place for a park, because for one thing, I know there are a lot of parks, and people talk about that and complain about it, but in this area, we don't have a place to go that we don't have to cross a busy street. So, you know, we either have to cross Highland or Fifth North, and now if they put one on the other section, like Wex or wherever that is, what that is, we still would have to cross Oak Street, you know, and they're all, they're busy. So, and that, our neighborhood all paid five hundred dollars for our park, and we, we haven't gotten that. And a lot of those people are, I shouldn't say a lot, many people have already been deceased or are moved away since this. So anyway, I guess I might have more to say, but I'll, I'll just finish with that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? Anybody else? Step up, name and address for the record, please.
Yep. I'm Mike with M and D Properties. We're, we're the ones that bought the land and that were proposed to develop it. I just want to reassure these people that, you know, I didn't have, you know, I didn't know about any promises that the diocese, when we bought this land, we didn't know anything about that, that they were promised, or a green space, or, or whatever, you know. And I just want to reassure them, you know, I actually built Schrader's House actually for them, and I just want to reassure them that anything we build there is going to be really nice. It's going to probably increase their value of, of their properties, actually. I, with just rough numbers, it's going to probably generate probably four million dollars worth of taxable revenue for the state or whatever, or for the, for the city. So I do have some pictures of what we're kind of proposing that, I don't know if this works off of a phone or not, but I have something that I could definitely show them or whatever.
Oh, it's on. It should be, they got to work in that room yet to get it up on all these different screens here.
Okay.
While they're doing that, you want to talk a little bit about what you're, oh, here we go.
Turn your phone so it makes it bigger.
There you go.
So as you can see, they're, they're very attractive. They're very nice. I would say they're going to be really high-end.
This would be in which lot?
These would be the, the quads, the.
The quads.
The fourplexes. They'll all be one level.
They'll all be one level. So they won't be that tall, you know. They're gonna be one level geared for, they're gonna be handicap accessible. They're gonna be for retirement people. You know, they're gonna have a lot of nice bells and whistles inside of them, so I don't see any reason it will decrease the value of the, the property owners around it. Just trying to give people more options in town or whatever. And, and like I said, it's, we're trying to make it so it fits in the neighborhood and it looks nice in the area that's there, so.
Mike, would this, would the garage doors face Sixth? Or would there be on a side street there, do you envision?
The doors would actually face the west and the east. So they would face, so they would not be facing the neighbors. If anything, there'd be a patio door or a small service door that would be facing the backyards of the people there. So it, it would look like just another house that would be behind it if it was on standard block in New Ulm, you know, where you see the other neighbor's backyard.
What about the homeowner's request to put some type of barrier back there? Trees, shrubs, fence?
We could consider maybe, you know, seeing, you know, depending on what it is, you know, it boils down to cost and, and some of that stuff. A fence, who's gonna maintain it and take care of that stuff? You know, we could definitely see, you know, take a look at it. I know they have a lot of trees in some of their backyards already. More than likely, it would be planting trees and stuff like that once the actual structure is built. So, you know, that's definitely something we could consider, whatever, you know, putting in after the houses are in and seeing how much room there is to put that in there, so. One thing is, if you do put any kind of fence or any of that kinda thing, you know, the deer, I feel like, if they're worried about the deer not coming through, I feel like the deer will still come through once the new structure is in there. If you put a fence up, you're definitely not gonna get deer in your backyard, if that's something that you guys, you know, are really worried about, so. But yes, we can get creative and do something like that, so.
I guess, you know, as a whole, I'd rather not see the council try to say, put a fence in 'cause, you know, someday it's gonna come to haunt us. Who built that fence? Who's responsible to maintain that fence in event that something happens? I'm not aware of any other fence, you know, that's been required by other developers within the community, but if they can do a living fence of some sort of shrubbery. But I, at the end of the day, I'd have to ask Roger if we can actually put this into conditions legally for a development agreement for a plot. I don't know.
I think the answer to that is yes, we could, but I think you pointed out the reasons why it may not be a wise thing to do and why we generally haven't done it in the past. I think we have had some where there've been aesthetic things with vegetation trees. And Dave Snowbrich probably would have more specifics or recollections on how we've handled this in the past. But you could do it, but should you do it? That's an open question.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I, I received a couple of calls from a couple of the homeowners, and their concerns were, you know, why they didn't get public notice. And so I sent an email out to Dave and John, got some information, a little background. And one of the questions was, when was it developed? You know, and rezoned to R3? And Dave responded, the rear half was 1968. And Dave is correcting me on that, saying yes. And then the front half was year 2000 that they were designated as R3 for the property. And one of the questions that I also received was putting a fence. I said I would have to confirm with, you know, staff that we could legally put that in a condition or not. But the more I thought about that, you know, the question comes down to maintaining that fence. And to put that cost onto a developer, I'm not familiar, you know, maybe Dave will have some background on that here, but I would suggest, you know, a living fence or shrubbery, perhaps.
I just wanted to comment that this project, the multifamily portion of it is subject to our landscape requirements. So he will, he will have to prepare a landscape plan. And, you know, you can focus a lot of that, those plantings along that side if that's what council would like to see.
Thank you, Dave.
You know, I'm gonna ask one more question. Do we have a plan where the water pond or the stormwater pond, you know, is gonna be on the plan?
We're currently working on that with Bolton and Mink. They're gonna be like rain gardens possibly, so it's not like a really big pond like you would see in other places. They're smaller. They're just smaller, there are more of them, but they're just a little smaller and probably not as dangerous, I think, as like an actual, you know, pond. And that would actually act as some privacy too, whatever, in some of those areas where it'd be designated a little area, garden.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mike. That was a question that somebody had reached out to me on.
Joel Stelling, interim city engineer. The LD facility has rain gardens up there. They have about three of them up there. So that kinda gives some perspective on how they can be landscaped and designed to kinda blend in as opposed to our big regional stormwater ponds. So just to give council a visual idea of some rain gardens that we have in town.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dave.
One other item I'd like to note is I was involved in the discussions with the diocese back in 2000 when they originally looked at, you know, the development of their property. And the parcel of land excluding the area behind the three homes on that side of the street that have been referenced here. But that front parcel was always considered for development by the diocese. They were gonna develop it in one way or another, perhaps for their own purposes, or perhaps they were gonna sell it off to somebody else. But that has always been their intent.
You're talking the front part of Block 1?
I'm talking the...
I understand the four lots and the front part of Block...
The four lots. If you drew a line across to Sixth North Street, that area, they always had intent to develop. And I would also note that, you know, the, the diocese has gone through a bankruptcy. And I think other parties are having perhaps input into, you know, some of the decisions that are, are being made.
Step up to the mic, please.
I just have a question. We have a covenant for Oak Bluff's first addition. And in our covenant, it talks about the restrictions that we have for R1 and R2 properties. But there is nothing in there for R3. So my question is, is, is this new parcel that's going to be developed, is that going to be part of Oak Bluff's first addition?
I'm positive it's not. Correct me if I'm wrong, Roger. That covenant, existing covenant, will not be on this new plat.
I'm not sure what covenants this charter is referring to. Are these are private covenants?
This is a covenant.
Something to do with the city. So it's up to the property owners.
Yeah, no, there, the diocese did have covenants for their property. But again, covenants do not involve the city of New Ulm. That's between the property owner.
Private.
It's, it's private, yeah. So as far as what that says, that's between those.
So would that between, be, that covenant then would be set up by that developer, that owner developer? And then as he sold that property, that's the covenant that they would have to sign?
Yeah. So I expect that, and Roger, correct me, that the covenants pass on to succeeding property owners.
It depends on how they're worded. Almost invariably, they indicate that they apply to the successor's entitlement. That's where they do it. It's not just the first owner. But again, these are all private things that are negotiated, and they're a matter of public records. So when someone buys a lot, they're supposed to read it. This is the covenants that you're accepting if you're gonna buy this and build a home here. But that's not anything to do with the city. That's, that's all a private matter.
Yeah. The, the one other thing I would note is that when the original rezoning took place in 2000, that front part that we're talking about was zoned to R3 at that point in time. And there was some concern expressed by area property owners as to the type of development that would take place there. So what the city council did is they designated it that if multifamily development took place on that parcel, that it had to go through the community unit project process. And so there are additional submittals that the developer has to make to the city. And then there also is a requirement for the developer to secure a conditional use permit. And so that's one of the conditions to the approval of the plat. That's the last one.
You know, this area for sale is up, or plat is up in my ward and just a block, a little over a block from where I live. And, and I've talked with quite a few of the homeowners up in this area in the last month. And, and they're devastated. This is a beautiful area. They have wonderful homes, they're wonderful people. And this development's gonna change their way of life and how they view their backyards and their privacy and their, it, it just changes things. And that's why you feel the passion that you hear tonight from these people that are, are speaking. And, and I feel it. And I, and, but what I also appreciate is that Mr. Crawl is here tonight. And, you know, he's, you know, he's not part of this decision that was, was made or not held up to, and wants to build nice homes. He has been in front of our council, in front of our EDA over the years, and got some good deals in the past. But here tonight, there, you know, over 120 signatures saying, you know, we really don't like this and we're not real happy about all this. So, but I really like that Mike's here. He stood up. He's willing to work with a potential privacy area and willing to, I think the only other thing I heard that I, that they'd like to meet with you, Mike, at some point, is that an option? Is that something you're willing to have a, a, a community meeting that either the city can facilitate or you facilitate? Or just where people can come and talk? Or you can kind of explain what's going on in that neighborhood? And...
Yeah, for sure. You know, I'm very open, you know. And like I said, the, the residential lots are, are for people to build on and, and whatever kinda house, you know, they can pick it, just like they were able to pick what they want to put on their lots. Same thing. But if people would like some input or like to see pictures of what we're thinking of doing, I know everybody's worried and they're just, I, I, you know, I, I get it, you know, and I understand, you know. But I'm definitely willing to, you know, work with people and show people. I've been in, you know, I've been in the New Ulm building for over 18 years now, houses in New Ulm for people. I've built over 120-some houses in the surrounding area. Many other townhomes. And everything, you know, has really turned out nice when it's all, if you, if you'd go back four years ago, five years, at Dakota West Edition, we put in over 20-some houses out there. And it just, it's a nice flourishing neighborhood now or whatever. And I just feel like this project would be the same way. I, I have a track record of taking buildings and fixing them up and making them look nice. And I'm just trying to help out the town, help out, you know, grow the town. Make, you know, we, we hear all the time, people want affordable housing, want nice things to, you know, trying to attract more people in the town and stuff like that. There's stuff like this all over the place in Mankato and Metro and stuff like that. And we're just trying to bring a little bit of it to New Ulm and, and still maintain the cozy home feel that New Ulm has.
So if Mr. Snowbrich had ahold of you, we could, maybe they could set a public meeting up in this room or some room or some area where you could leave some pictures around so it's open and people could kinda wander around and...
Sure, yep.
Something like that.
We're actually working with a drafter right now to do some mockups of what they're gonna look like inside and outside. And we can definitely have an open house of some sorts or a community of people in the neighborhood that wanna come and see it.
Yeah, maybe work with our city manager and see what, once you get what you have to show.
I, I don't think people will be disappointed. You know, besides losing the green space, I get, I get that. But we're gonna put something in there really nice, so.
So Mike, basically, you're putting together a landscape plan with this, as well as the house concept?
Correct, yep.
Which is part of the agreement.
I do have one question for our city attorney. I realize Dave is, or our community development director is working on the draft agreement. They've gotta come back for number five, to secure the conditional use for a multiple, multiple-family dwelling. But at this time, Roger, it, it sounds like, you know, they wanted single-family homes. We can't even legally go back and overturn that R3, correct?
No, it's, well, you're correct.
Right. I just want the public to know that.
It's been zoned R3 apparently since 1968? Or twen, or twenty? Yeah, so, I mean, what they're proposing is a lawful use of the property. And we can't, and in R3, we can't say you cannot go beyond just single-family residences. You're absolutely right. And at the gravement, I think, of what the neighbors are saying tonight is they feel that they were misled. And that's got nothing to do with the city. We have a property owner now who wants to develop it in a lawful way. He's entitled to do that with whatever conditions the city believes are appropriate that we're imposing here. But otherwise, this is not, the city didn't make this promise. Mr. Crawl didn't make this promise. So we're just doing our jobs to allow him to use his property legally, so.
Right. And just the general public's info, we, legally, we can't overturn tonight and say, no, you're gonna be R1. We can't, we can't do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Well, that brings up an issue then because the, the entire section across Highland was zoned R3. And now, on Seventh, that part of it is now been zoned R1 and R2. So how did that happen?
Mr. Snowbrich, explain what our zoning ordinance allows with the R1, 2, and 3?
Yeah, we have pyramid zoning in our residential districts. So R1 is single-family. R2 is two-family and single-family. R3 is multifamily, two-family, and single-family. So that's, and that's not uncommon for zoning ordinances to be set up that way.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
So then it would be, it would be possible to build single-family homes in an R3 district?
Correct.
Absolutely.
So then our request for single-family homes, we didn't request it to be rezoned. We were requesting the builder to consider building single-family homes along Sixth, even though it was zoned R3. Furthermore, we were deceived because we thought the land behind our house was zoned agricultural. And we just found out a week ago from Mr. Snowbrich that it was rezoned, it was zoned R3 in 1968. And no one mentioned that to us when we were purchasing our lot. So we were deceived, big time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
If not, I guess, like Les says, I guess we're sympathetic with the people, but it's beyond our control. I guess if you could work with Mike and work out something with him, that would be great. And I'm sure he's willing to work with you,
him, that would be great. And I'm sure he's willing to work with you, but I don't know if he's willing to go single-family. But, you know, that's something that you guys can talk to him. But it's something that took place way before our time. And so, like I say, sorry about that, but I don't think we have much of a choice but to go ahead and approve it, so.
And again, the only place there would be a little bit of control, we've had to come past councils, when they do the, do the condition use permit, if council feels, now wait a minute, we're giving you this permit to do this, let's look at doing this, this, concerns of the neighborhood. I mean, we do have an opportunity there, but just to change it to single-family, we can't do it.
You also have to approve the development agreement, too.
Correct, which is pending, yeah.
Now, we haven't seen yet.
So, does anybody else like to be heard? See none? Entertainer motion?
I'll offer the motion to close the public hearing and offer the resolution to waive the reading approving the conditions of the final plat of Oak Bluff Ninth Edition, generally located at 1406 to 1446 Sixth North Street, with conditions?
With the conditions that Dave restated?
Yes, that, that were read.
Right.
I'm going to second that.
We have a motion and a second, close public hearing, offer the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number four, license permits, 4.1, liquor license extension to the outdoor patio, and that's for Garbaldies, Smilies, and New Ulm American Legion. And that's, be up till November 30th, 2020. Chris?
Council President, councilors, this is just a, an extension, probably the final extension of the year for the temporary outdoor patios till November 30th. I know the Legion is looking at closing down their patio October 15th, but I was just going to keep them consistent and do everyone until November 30th.
Sounds good.
I'll offer the motion, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more, just, offer the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 5.1, established permit parking stalls for 515 North Washington Street. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. President, City Councilors. The Safety Commission considered this request at their September 3 meeting, and unanimously recommended approval with the condition that the requester contact the Police Department enforcement personnel to obtain the proper permitting paperwork, and that if they are to move, that they contact the city so we can remove that signage. We received correspondence from the homeowner at 515 North Washington Street requesting either permit parking stall or handicap parking stall in front of their home during the school year due to the proximity of the Nuax. At times, they can have a difficult time parking in front of their home. And both residents are disabled, and having to park far away from their, their home is quite an inconvenience for them. So we took the request to the Safety Commission, and as previously stated, they recommended approval.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
So they have a garage, or no?
I believe that there's a garage in the back, but I think from my discussions with the property owners, they prefer to park in the front of their house for access reasons.
Okay.
And we, I should add, we've done this before in, like, South Payne Street by Jefferson Complex down there, too, is permit parking for some residents down there.
Well, there's one by the Catholic School, too, or there, there was. I don't know if it's still there.
Yeah. There's one on State Street there, right across from.
There's also one on West Street with the hospital park.
Well, part of my question is, do we, do we follow up on those? I mean, sometimes folks move, sometimes things, I mean, do we just leave them there forever?
That's the hope with the condition that we add, that they contact us when they move, is that it gets removed. That's a good question that I don't have an answer for on some of the previous ones, if they're still in use, or if they're not in use. I don't know if Park Enforcement has knowledge of that or not.
We have removed some of the past couple of years already. I know we have.
Yeah, the most recent ones we did were on that South Payne Street stretch. Yep.
Yeah, and I'm absolutely fine with approving this. That's not the question, it's just that we make sure that, you know, we keep an eye on some of these for when people.
Right. Yeah, we, I can follow up with some Park Enforcement staff and.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. Yeah. I'm going to, uh, let's see, was this the resolution?
Yes.
Yes, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, establishing the one permit parking stall at 515 North Washington Street.
Second. We have a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 6.1, North Star, my computer's goofing up a little bit, North Star Aviation Incorporated Fixed Base Operator Lease Agreement. Joe?
Right. Thank you, Mr. President, City Councilors. I'm very happy to announce that we've received a proposal for FBO services at our airport from North Star Aviation out of Mankato. I've had multiple meetings with Jerry Redman from North Star Aviation through the past few months.
Goodbye.
Gave him tours of the, tours of the airport facilities and discussion about expectations with future operations. As you know, the New Ulm Flight Services terminated their lease agreement with the city on May 29th, and we have been operating without an FBO provider out there since that time. And within the proposal, from North Star Aviation, they provide a range of services that they are going to provide here in New Ulm. And Jerry Redman from North Star is here, which I'll let him take the podium here and go through their proposal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jerry Redman, Vice President of Operations for North Star Aviation, here to answer any questions that you guys have regarding this facility. I don't know if you guys know anything about North Star Aviation. We're based out of Mankato. I mean, I can give a little history here quick. It actually started with, I think, some managers from New Ulm that went over to Mankato, and ended up buying out that FBO service back in the early 90s. Since then, though, North Star has grown. We provide the flight training for Mankato State University. You might see some purple aircraft landing out here now and then. And then we also have a facility in Bowling Green, Ohio for BGSU with another flight training facility, and then down in Springfield, Missouri with another flight training facility. Overall, we employ right around 155 people between all three locations, ranging from line service to maintenance to, majority of our staff is flight instructors, roughly sitting at probably 80 flight instructors at this point. Mankato is our largest location because we do offer all the FBO services also, where the other two are districtly flight training facilities. In Mankato, we operate right around 30 aircraft with 75 people, and are looking forward to, you know, creating a relationship here with the city of New Ulm, working with Joe. We were first looking at this right away, but with COVID, put restrictions on us, and we just kind of had to sit back and wait and make sure we had all of our cards in place before we started venturing out with any capital expenditures. But like I said, we're excited. I think we can bring Shell Oil as one of our providers for fuel. We're looking at expanding some of the services here, trying to get more of a full-service application for whether it's jet traffic or general aviation. We do have, some of our staff members actually live in New Ulm, so it's going to make it somewhat easy, I think, for line services and maintenance to coordinate with fulfilling those needs. So, I don't know if any of you have any questions regarding North Star at all, or?
When I looked at your lease, it's, it looks like the lease, unless I'm reading this wrong, is just to the end of the year, right?
Well, we haven't established a lease yet.
Correct. But that's in your proposal.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. President, councilors, that lease agreement, it runs to the end of the year, but then continues until notice, 90-day notice is given by either party to terminate.
So we don't sign like a 10-year lease? It's an annual renewal lease?
Yeah, it's, yeah, correct. Well, it doesn't even have to be renewed. It'll, it will continue until such time that we, either party gives a 90-day notice to terminate. The lease that is included is the lease that we had with New Ulm Flight Service, and we have not really went through any negotiations on the lease yet, other than small parameters. Generally, the lease agreement is pretty boilerplate, other than some final numbers, FBO fees and things like that, that we need to work, work through, so.
Then I saw somewhere where there's like a $10 million insurance coverage. Is that pretty standard? Is that standard? I just read that, I was like, whoa, yeah, okay, that's a lot of money.
I had a question for you, Joe. The city will pay the North Star Aviation the sum of 1,700 per month to assist with snow removal and to keep the airport open. Is that been our going rate?
That's, again, something we still have to negotiate that final amount on, but we did pay New Ulm Flight Service 1,500 per month to perform those items. So it may be less than that. And that, we haven't entered that discussion yet, but I think it should be right around that ballpark number.
But you'll have other budgetary numbers coming to us here?
Yeah, we'll still have lawn maintenance, and that's in, in next year's budget and everything like that as well. A lot of the airport, yeah, a lot of the airport things we get reimbursed by the FAA by, through our grant process. So, a lot of that, a lot of those costs we absorb initially and then submit for reimbursement for those general operation and maintenance items at the airport. So they really come and go, or through the budget, and they really have no impact.
Okay. I was just wanting to make sure we don't have any surprises here, and that we've covered our, self.
Thank you, Joe. Any more questions?
Sounds like the engineering department's all right with it. I'm going to make a motion to accept the fixed, the fixed base operator services proposal for the North Star Aviation Incorporated authorize the city manager, finance director to execute the airport lease and agreement document, and allow the city manager, city engineer, and city attorney to make minor changes to the lease document as needed, and final lease negotiations with North Star Aviation Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On paper, say hi.
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 Polls, no? Motion carries. Okay.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. Who knew?
Enter your participant ID, followed. You are in the meeting now. There is one other participant in the meeting.
Okay, thanks. Item 6.2, reason for denial of a variance request at 125 South State Street. John?
Good evening, Council President, councilors. The City Council had its September 1, 2020 meeting denied the variance request at 125 South State Street to reduce the side yard back, side yard setback for the placement of a shed from 1.5 feet from the required 10 feet. Now, state statute requires that if a governing body like yourself denies a variance request, that those reasons for denial be presented to the applicant in writing. And since that wasn't provided at, since the reasoning for denial wasn't provided in writing at the last city council meeting on September 1, staff prepared a letter with the reasoning that we would like the city council to review and approve if they agree with the reasoning for the denial. And I'd actually like to read the reasoning out loud, if you wouldn't mind.
Go ahead, John.
So, in the letter to the applicant, it'll read, your variance request was denied for the following reasons. One, the city council did not believe your request constituted a practical difficulty, and that there are locations on the property where the shed could be placed and still meet, still meet setback requirements. Two, with regards to being able to store items that are currently outside the garage inside of the shed, the council believed that this was an issue, that this issue was not a prob, was a problem, sorry, excuse me, believed that this issue was not a problem created by the property, but rather by the property owner, and therefore does not create a practical difficulty. Three, it is the city council's belief that there are not unique circumstances on the property that were not created or caused by the landowner, and therefore do not constitute a practical difficulty that would necessitate a variance.
Thank you, John.
I'm going to offer a motion to approve the reasons for the denial of the variance request at 125 South Minnesota Street as stated at the city council meeting on September 1, and direct staff to send the letter.
Second.
I'm going to correct. You said South Minnesota Street. It's South, South State Street.
I see something.
You said South Minnesota Street. It's written in here. There's an error, and it should be South State.
Yeah. Oh, on the top, it is South State. Okay.
Yep, down here, South Minnesota.
See the typo? Under proposed action.
Yes.
So I correct that Minnesota Street, or State Street.
I'm second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On paper, say hi.
Hi.
Polls, no? Motion carries. We've got an item 7.1, preliminary city of New Ulm 20, 21 budget.
Okay, councilors.
Go ahead.
This kind of brings the, the budget process to a head so far. It started in April and May. We had a couple of work sessions with council over the last few weeks, and so the budget before you needs to be certified to the county by September 30th, or you can make changes at this point, but we need it certified to the county by September 30th. And there will be a public hearing for the final levy on December 1 that can continue to December 8 if needed. And then that final levy would be approved by the council at the December 15 meeting. So then, just, just to go through a few slides here, and I'll go through fairly quickly. You know, I don't like to go on for too long. So, so looking at this one, this just kind of gives you a trend of where that local government aid has been over the last eight years or so. For next year, it has been certified to go up $41,000 to a total of just over, or just under 4.5 million. So that's been promising as it's been so far. We haven't received any indication that there's anything that will be changed or held back at this point in time. This next slide just kind of gives you an idea of where the expenses have gone over that same period of time. And you can see for a while, the expenses were going up every year, and then they've kind of leveled off and will drop a little bit next year. The main reason for that is because of a lack of, a lack of projects out in the budget. The renewed projects are, are out, and all the other parking rec projects are out. And then you see there, or you don't see here, but there is actually a decline in the revenues as well that is reflected by, or from the donations that we won't be receiving, like for German Park. There was a huge amount of budgeted for donations in 2020 that we wouldn't have in 2021. And then those revenues also include the transfers from other funds that we use to fund some of those projects. So that's why the revenues would drop. And then this slide just gives you an idea, or lets you see where the levy has gone over the same, since 2013, in comparison to the tax rate, the city tax rate. So you can see for a while that, I mean, the levy has always gone up. It goes up every year, basically for inflationary reasons, if not for projects and other things as well. And then the, you can see the tax rate was going up at a higher rate for a while, meaning that the tax capacity wasn't keeping up with the needs that we needed for, for the city services. But now that rate has gone down, and will level off a little bit with the budget that I'm presenting right now. So then, just in general, a quick view of what is in the budget right now, that includes health insurance premiums are going up 4%. The last two years, we had decreases of 5 and 12%, so this kind of brings us back into, into check. We have a very healthy population, so we have no reason to believe that this, at this point, is going to be any different. We do have a wage increase budgeted for full-time union and non-union employees of 3%. That also includes part-time employees. I should add that in there. And that's based on the union contracts that are negotiated. All three unions are scheduled to get a 3% increase for the year. Property and workers' compensation insurance increases every year. We know that from our personal policies as well, but we budget a 3% to 7% increase based on the league's recommendations each year. And then also in the budget are those funds that we use to save for, for capital projects with the buildings and the fire department and everything going forward. So that includes a $350,000 contribution to the building renovation fund, $200,000 contribution to the fire fund, $150,000 to a capital improvement fund, which helps keep the bonding needs down if necessary and meet those assessment requirements, and then $25,000 towards a battery building replacement. And that would be year two of three years that we're scheduled to make that before we can replace that building. And then these are some of the items that we took out of the budget after that last work session and the discussion we had. And I can explain a little bit more some of those. And then the next slide kind of goes with it as far as what's still in the budget, so we can talk about those kind of together. But, so the Sister Cities, the Concord Singers, and the band, and Bavarian Blast will receive their full budgeted amounts for 2020, our assumption being that since they didn't have as many events, or didn't have the events at all, that they would carry those funds forward to 2021. So we did remove the 3,000, the $3,000 contribution to Sister Cities, the $5,000 for Concord Singers, and $10,000 of the band's $15,000 request. We removed the $3,000 for Bavarian Blast. The Herman Fest fireworks, they won't get that payment this year. We haven't made that payment yet, but we'll carry that forward to the next budget instead of putting in another $15,000. And then the Human Rights Commission actually requested a budget of 87.50. We took out 2,700 of that at this point. And I'll explain more about. twenty-seven hundred of that at this point. And I'll explain more about their budget too on the next slide. So then the items that are still in the budget. We did leave the egg society, um, request in there for the fairgrounds. Um, in their letter, they acknowledged the fact that there is no fair in twenty twenty, but they listed, um, projects including replacing coliseum windows, electrical upgrades, um, grand, grandstand fence improvements and, and a newer tractor, um, were things that they cited for the reasons for requesting the amount. Um, the Heritage Preservation Society dropped their budget request from fifteen to thousand, ten thousand dollars. Um, but they have been carrying over their unused portions each year in anticipation of larger costs due to, to the her, to Herman the German. So we just keep rolling that forward and their, their amount, their balance is building. The Human Rights Commission, as I said, requests of eighty-seven fifty. Um, we reduced it to six thousand fifty. Um, since two thousand sixteen, their budget has increased from twenty-four ninety-five to eighty-seven fifty, but they only averaged twenty-six hundred dollars in usage. And I don't anticipate them having a large amount of usage this year either just because they can't do their trainings and some of their events. The band did request fifteen thousand dollars as they do every year. I left five thousand in at this point, um, to help them cover some of their fixed costs that they have. That, they do send a detailed budget with, with their request and, um, it, a ten thousand dollars of that budget goes for rehearsals and performance payments to the participants. I didn't know if they would, were, still had any of that cost this year. Um, and I assumed it would be down a little bit yet, so they could carry over some of their funds to the following year if we would choose to leave it at five thousand. The battery, we reduced their request by, or they reduced their request by fifty-nine hundred dollars, just because that's the cost that they would have had for parades and, and other events. And since they didn't have those, they, they'll carry, they have said they'll carry those funds forward. But we did need to leave twelve thousand in the budget to help them cover their other fixed costs, including insurance, which is a large cost for them, as well as the maintenance and, and care of, of the, of their equipment. The con, let's see, where was I? The Concord Singers, uh, requested ten thousand five hundred for twenty twenty-one. Um, that's up from their fifty-five hundred dollar request for twenty twenty. Their request letter cited a reduced revenue in, in twenty twenty because of their la, inability to have performances. Um, and they are planning a ninetieth anniversary celebration in twenty twenty-one. But at this point, we haven't left anything in the budget for them. But as I stated, they would get their full twenty twenty request and could carry that over. The Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, uh, we've been giving fifteen hundred dollars every year for, um, seven out of the last ten years, we've contributed to them. They help set up programs for local youth, um, and for small businesses. The Tree Commission, uh, requested seven thousand dollars and they use that for, um, for programs for, um, let's see. For their Diseased and Boulevard Tree Program, for other contractual services, for their home show and for pest policy and education. They also ca, usually carry over any amount if they have that left each year. And then the Wandagog Association, the funds that we provide to them help them with their maintenance, their programs, their insurance, and their advertising. And then just to, uh, clarify, the HPC, the Human Rights Commission, um, and the Tree Commission are all city funds. They, they stay within the city. They don't go anywhere. It's just a matter of what they expand out of their accounts each year. But we still have them make those budget requests based on their plans for the year. And then we get into some of the scenarios, and these are a little bit different than what was presented at the work session. We made a few changes. So looking at these, the first couple, the scenario one and two, I don't know how easy that is to see. Um, going with scenario one, this is the budget that we have in front of you right now. And it is a seven, it's a five point seven eight levy change, or five point seven eight percent levy increase over twenty twenty. Um, that actually would have basically no impact on the tax rate based on the information I got from the county. And I did receive updated tax capacity information from the county. The numbers they gave us were pretty close. It was about a twenty thousand dollar increase. And then going to scenario two, the only thing that I changed there was just taking out a quarter of a year of that assistant city engineer and assistant public works, uh, director. Um, that would just give us a few months within the year before that they would start that hiring process. Otherwise, that still leaves the training budget, um, in, in full. Um, it lets engineering get their drone. It keeps the COLA in there for all employees, including the unions. And it allows us to do the compensation study that we're splitting with the public utilities. These two scenarios give us the best options for going forward. Uh, because this is the preliminary levy and we can't increase it going for, later, um, it's nice to have this room where we can come back, especially in a year where we don't know what's gonna happen over the next few months. We really don't know what the COVID impact could be or what changes could happen. So this gives us the most ability to make those changes and adjustments as we get closer to the end of the year before we set that final levy. And then the next two scenarios, uh, make a few bigger cuts. Um, they, one, the scenario three reduces the assistant for engineering and public works down to half a year. Um, it reduces the training budget by half. It, um, and takes out that engineering drone. And then that gets you down to a three point nine percent increase in the levy, which is actually a one point six percent decrease in the tax rate. And then scenario four takes out those assistant positions completely, takes out the training budget completely, um, and takes out that compensation study. And so that one would get you a two point oh seven percent levy increase and a two point nine nine percent decrease in the tax rate. This last slide just gives you the detail of some of those i, items that were in the scenario, lets you know what the, what their total amounts were and what their impact is on that levy, levy change. So that is all the information I have for you at this point. If you have any questions, I'm ready for those.
Thank you, Nicole. I guess looking at everything here, you know, it's kinda like when we had the work session and stuff, we were kinda, everybody was leaning toward either scenario one or two. I guess two was the most favorite. Nice. I personally support number two. I don't wanna even think of going to three or four because we're still at number two. We're still looking at a, a tax rate change minus. So that's a positive actually for us, so. And keeping all of our funding in there and stuff, I think we really need to do that. So that's where I'm coming from.
I'm gonna go with my two cents where I'm, I went with the scenario two at the last work session we did, and I agree with the council president. My vote's gonna go for scenario two.
Yeah, I guess I, I have to agree. I, I would, I would start at scenario two. I, I still don't like four point nine percent as a, a levy. That doesn't fit real well with me. But when you do look at the tax rate change, um, you know, that gets to be a small negative. But I think there's other things that we may be consider before we have to, you know, till it's the final. But I think right now, I don't think, we would never go over that four point nine seven. So I, why would we want to preliminary set something higher than that? And it gives us the more options, like Nicole says. It gives us more options to either cut, you know, we can't increase it. If something would come along, we can't increase it.
I'm in support of scenario two also, and it's keeping it under five percent and, and, you know, maybe staff can come back with some more opportunities for some reductions.
I'm gonna concur as well. I think we, we're all basically saying the same thing, that we like scenario two. We wanna see a little, a little more cutting before we get this down, um, at the end of the year. But it's definitely a good start. I appreciate the work from city staff and preparing the, the various different scenarios. You know, it doesn't take too much, you know, whether or not we wanna pull anything out of, uh, putting money into buildings or, uh, those scenarios to drop this fairly quickly. But then you pay the price down the road when you need that money, so, um.
And I guess, I would, I would jump in and kinda say that I would be, you know, and when, if, if we get to the point where we think we're, we still wanna lower that levy, that I would not wanna cut any of those funds completely, but I would be willing to cut a small portion from each one of them to, if we wanted to bring it down. So I'm just leaving that out there, that when we go into making the final budget, that I would be open to that.
And we've done a lot of work on this in the last two, three months. So I'm gonna go ahead and offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting the preliminary twenty twenty-one budget for the city of New Ulm with a total appropriations of twenty-one million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars, maximum property tax of eight thou, eight million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, sixteen dollars, setting the public hearing date for December first, two thousand twenty, six P M. Uh, the continuation of the public hearing for December eighth, uh, two thousand nineteen at six P M. If, if needed to consider the twenty twenty-one budget.
Counselor Schultz, I just wanna clarify. So the numbers that you read are for the scenario one. The scenario two numbers would be slightly different.
Mm-hmm.
You are right. Um, you wanna read those in the record?
Yep. So the scenario two numbers would be... The levy amount will be... So small. Eight, that, eight million, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. And what else was, what other numbers were included in that resolution? Oh, the total appropriations. I don't have that number right in front of me, what that would be, but I, we'll make that adjustment to the resolution. Can, can we fit that in there somehow?
Can we refer to option two?
Yes.
You know.
Right.
Using the scenario two numbers.
Option two is stated in the, in our packet, so.
Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Offered resolution, waived reading, setting a two thousand twenty budget, or two thousand twenty-one budget. Any more discussion? See none? Finance director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item seven point two, set a public hearing for the two thousand nineteen utility street and alley improvements group one, and that would be for Tuesday, October twentieth, twenty twenty, at four thirty P M.
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On paper, say aye.
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 Polls no, motion carries. Item number seven point three, set a public hearing on the reassessments of the unpaid Lakeside Village, two thousand five Dakota West Edition, two thousand seven, special assessments. Joe?
Uh, Mr. President, city councilors, um, this is something we bring forward around this time every year as lots sell in those tax forfeited, um, developments. So we have a handful of lots in Lakeside Village that we'll send notices out along with one in Dakota West Edition. And we would like to set the public hearing for Tuesday, November third at four thirty P M.
Thank you, Joel. Public hearing, anybody, oh, that, we're just setting public hearing, so.
That's correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I'll offer the motion to approve setting the public hearing for Tuesday, November third at four thirty.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On paper, say aye.
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 Polls no, motion carries. Item seven point four, New Ulm Municipal Airport Courtesy Car Policy. Joe?
Uh, Mr. President, city councilors, before you today is a policy that I've, um, developed by looking at other municipal, municipalities that have courtesy cars at the airports and, um, revise it slightly, um, for the New Ulm Airport. A little bit of background is, um, discussion with, uh, pilots that visit. Um, I was kinda surprised since the end of May how many phone calls we get asking if we have a courtesy car at the airport for people coming to visit. Um, so that led me to talk with the police chief, um, just to see what their schedule is on getting replacement vehicles and whatnot, because the most common option at airports are decommission squad cars. So after I talked with the police chief, he mentioned that they had a couple cars coming up, uh, for replacement. And by the end of the year, end of October even, we may have a option available, um, to use for a Curtis vehicle up at the airport. Um, so I did the research and came up with the policy that's before you today. Um, the squads are restored to, um, with the factory rear seats and, um, as a normal car would be. So, um, it's not, not like we, uh, would have a, just an old squad car up there where you can't open the back doors or anything like that. So, um, the agreement was included in your packets. Um, if you have any questions, I guess we'd be able to entertain those.
Anybody have any questions? Roger?
Mr. President, I've been working with Joel in connection with this and there's a, and we've done some research. We checked into the insurance situation because you're going to have, if this was implemented, you're going to have parties driving a city vehicle. And the insurance law in Minnesota is that the insurance, in this case, follows the vehicle. It's not the pilot's insurance, okay? Under Minnesota law, that would apply if you are renting a car. So if you go to the airport and rent a car, yeah, your insurance covers that. Um, but this is gonna be under our league insurance. The second thing is that we have in our city policy manual, a prohibition on non-employees. It says either you have to be an employee of the city or an agent of the city to be operating a city vehicle. And it also says if you're doing it, you have to be doing it for city business. So doing this without, we, all you'd need to do would be to change it. If you wanted to do this, you should change the policy. We would have to get it in front of you and, and do an amendment to accept out courtesy cars at the airport if you wanted to do that. But right now, just going ahead with this without making that change, you'd have a contradiction there. This would arguably violate it. And although the league is wonderful at working with insurance claims, any insurance company, the first thing they're gonna do is see, is there a way we can avoid this claim? And if they say, wait a minute, this person never should have been driving this car 'cause it's in violation of your own policy, we might not even have insurance. So again, it's your call, of course, on whether or not you wanna do this program. If you wanna do it, then I think we at least need to take care of those things so that it's consistent with our employee guidelines.
I guess.
Chris?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Lisa. You got some?
And I will say, those, those are our, our employee guidelines. That's our employee policy. Um, pilots are not employees, so that guideline doesn't refer to them. And that's why you would be approving an airport courtesy car policy that is specific to those vehicles. Um, again, that's, that's how I see it. When we spoke to the league, they seemed to be okay with that when Joe reached out to them. So this, this policy is specific to those courtesy vehicles, because I don't want pilots driving a snowplow and give them that opportunity and, and they're not.
Chris, I'm sorry, but I disagree with you in this. My legal opinion is that, for one thing, these cars are in the custody of city employees right now. Okay? I mean, the city isn't gonna let these out unless an employee of the city agrees to do it, all right? So those policies apply. Plus, they also say a city vehicle can't be used unless it's for city business. And I think that applies. So again, if the council wants to do this, we can definitely do it. But I think that needs to be amended to allow it.
It wouldn't take that much to amend that anyway, right?
No, I, I don't know. I know Shawna, periodically, she'll see places to make revisions and will bring that before you.
So what do people do now? They use taxis, I would assume?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, what?
They, they, they usually don't fly out here. If they need to use a courtesy car or something like that, I've had some pilots say, we don't come just because we don't have courtesy cars.
I would guess, yeah.
Um, 'cause again, we have one taxi, you know, in town that they may or may not know about.
Question for the city attorney. Is it, is it as simple in my mind as courtesy, or not a courtesy car, it's rented for a dollar?
You could probably.
I'm not talking to every citizen in New Ulm, but to a pilot, visiting pilot?
Right. Then you've got the question of who's, can we only rent it to pilots?
That's.
I mean, that, that kinda, you're, you're right. I thought of doing it that way. I also thought that I, you know, the gentleman from the flight service is gone. I don't know if they'd wanna buy the cars and take this on. I think that might be another option as long as they're gonna be doing it anyway.
Are we selling a car for minimal?
Most, most of the.
Those squads aren't worth much anyway.
Most of the courtesy cars are owned by the municipalities. I don't think there's, not, the research that I did, most of them are owned by the city that has the airport. And this is how they go about letting people use those.
The simplest is change their policy.
Change policy?
Sure.
Yep.
Correct?
Correct?
Correct, I mean, again, and, and we would have insurance coverage, I believe we've checked on this through the league, but, and I understand that there would be restrictions as Joe has put into the policy. But if you got a pilot who comes into town and he picks up four doctors after a tough day's surgery, and they get into an accident, there's going to be some big claims. And I think we've got, like, how many taxi services serving New Ulm, four, five? But if you want to do this, you absolutely can, so, but if, as long as, if Shawna could put together the, uh, the work to amend that, then it would be consistent and be your call.
So a recommendation probably just to table this until, or the recommendation move forward, if that's what we see?
Uh, perhaps we could do that and then time it for when the same meeting where Shawna's... Proposal would come up?
Roger, could we approve it under the condition that the policy manual gets changed, because we won't have any vehicles up there for quite a while yet, anyway? If that's all right with you, or would you rather bring them both back?
Well, I think if, yeah, if you, as long as it would be consistent with a amendment to the policy manual to allow the use of the airport courtesy cars, pending that being amended, then sure.
Sounds good. Couple options, whatever.
Works.
So you're just saying that in all of the years past, we haven't had any, we hadn't had a courtesy car out there?
That's correct. Uh, if Newell Flight Service let them use one of their vehicles, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, if that was a, a option that, that they offered or not. I don't believe it was, but, because I never saw anything listed as such before.
And what other airports are doing the same, or municipal airports having these courtesy cars available, I mean, what size airports are they, or?
Uh, anything from your Mankato's to this, bulk of the policy I got from Buffalo, so, um, all, all sizes. And, yeah, it surprisingly was the most common question I received since the end of May is, and it's at least two to three a month, probably, is do you have a courtesy car available up there? So I felt that was a, a need that we were la- lacking out there, and sent, bringing it forth today.
Any questions, or Joe?
And you said, would that be another one of the expenses that would be covered under the, that we get refunded back?
Yeah, I believe, um, the police chief has stated that he would just, um, interdepartment swap the, the courtesy vehicle, so the only real expense we may have would be...
Insurance.
Fuel, if, um, people aren't filling up as they should be, because according to the agreement, they should be topping off the tank when they're done, and things like that, so. Um, we're hoping it's obeyed and followed, you know, because we don't, you know, could end up in one of those things where we lose that privilege if rules aren't followed, so.
Yeah, and it's our car, so if we ever, if we need to stop it, we, it's not like, it's perpetual.
I think it's worth trying for preliminary experiment for twenty twenty-one, and, you know, that they'd be mindful and top off the fuel and put some, you know, mileage, you know, keep a record. Be kind of curious to see, you know, do we see two thousand miles a year, or is it five thousand miles a year for?
Or five hundred.
Correct.
Yeah.
Might just be buzzing around town to get something to eat. Try it for a year and reevaluate it and see if there's, uh, if it's of benefit.
Yeah, because we'll get the completed forms, that we'll install a, a secure box so they can complete the forms with all their information on it, and kind of keep tally of how many uses it has, and keep track of that mileage, and see, see how much it does get used, so.
Any other questions? Always entertain a motion.
Well, I'll take a try at it here, I'd, I'm gonna offer a motion to adopt the Newell Municipal Airport Courtesy Call, Car Policy. Pending a revision from Roger, uh, to amend our policy before we would enact this. For the future. Does that kind of cover it, Roger? Or what else would I have?
I think so, it's pending an amendment to the employee policy to allow the courtesy cars at the airport.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Posse no, motion carries, item five point, or seven point five. Allocation of five to six parking stalls at the municipal city lot for electric, electric vehicle, fast charging station. Chris?
Council president, councilors, this is, uh, coming before you, uh, it was approved, uh, yesterday at the public utility special meeting, uh, to move forward with this project. Uh, this comes about, uh, from a two thousand seventeen, uh, federal government case that, uh, they won against Volkswagen, so Volkswagen had to, uh, sign a settlement of fifteen billion dollars. Uh, of that, Minnesota rece- received forty-seven million, and that was, uh, given to be managed by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. They, uh, went out to contract and contracted with, uh, Zeph, uh, Inc., and, uh, they were to install, uh, twenty-two E V charging stations, um, around Minnesota. And, uh, the utility director, um, went out and applied, um, to get the charging stations, um, in New Ulm. Uh, the location will be the parking lot adjacent to city hall, it'll be five to six parking stalls, um, closest to second, uh, second north, uh, along there. Uh, and what that will be, we'll be giving up five, uh, to six spaces, um, and they will be able to park, uh, three, um, electric vehicles, uh, in those spaces. So it's a, a loss of two parking spots overall, uh, because they do have to put some equipment out there. Um, and then one of the stalls will be a double stall, potentially for handicap, uh, accessibility as well. Um, there will be, um, there'll be a tier-two charging station and a fast charging station. Uh, part of the agreement is that it would have to be, um, on a major corridor that's visible. Um, it'll be, you know, kind of a economic development driver, uh, for the city, um, we will be on E V maps as charging stations, uh, so it'll be more visible. Uh, it'll be visible from Broadway, uh, as well. Uh, it is no cost, uh, to the city, uh, Zeph would actually own and operate and maintain the charging units. And at, uh, any given point, if Zeph feels they're not worth being there, they can pull, or we do have the right to purchase, um, the charging stations and maintain them ourselves, just like we do with the one, uh, down on German Street. I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Chris, any questions for Chris?
Well, we already have two charging stations, how, do we know what the use is for those?
What was, yes, Chris, Chris has that.
Great, thank you. You knew that question was coming, right?
Good afternoon, um, yes, um, we have two level-two charging stations, um, right across the street from the P U C. And, um, those, they were installed, um, in October of two thousand seventeen, so just a little under three years. Um, we've used about, or they have been used about six hundred and twenty-nine hours. And so, um, just to give you a little, a little idea.
What does that mean, what does that mean?
Well, that means that, um, they have been, the cars.
Plugged in for them.
They have been plugged in for six hundred and twenty-nine hours. Um, typically, a level-two charger will take, um, four, four and a half hours to charge up to eighty percent battery. Um, the real winner in, in the charging station through Volkswagen is that we get a D C level, a D C fast charger. And so the difference between that is, um, like I said, a level-two is about four point five hours for a full charge, or eighty percent. Um, a D C fast charger, it could be up to twenty to thirty minutes. And so it's much quicker, it's much more desirable, and it's much more expensive. And so when we were looking at, um, the charging station across from the P U C, we would have liked to have done a fast charger, but we couldn't afford it. And so now, um, this opportunity has come. Um, the level-two chargers down there, just to give you a little bit of an idea, um, so far, it has saved twelve thousand one hundred and eighty gallons of gas. So, you know, it gets used, and, um, in looking at the, um, usage history, the majority of the usage is coming from people outside of the five, um, five, six, oh, seven, three area codes. So people are coming, people are coming to town, they're using it. Um, what we've heard from Zeph is that, um, E V charging customers look for places to go that have a charging station, uh, because they need to. And so, um, that's why they want to have people, they want to have these that are close to shopping, close to dining areas, close to your downtown, right off of, you know, the, this will be right off of the fourteen, fifteen corridor. It's just a really good location. Um, I did talk to them yesterday, it's going to be five stalls, not six. Uh, one of the stalls will be for the infrastructure, like the city manager said, and then we'll have, um, a handicap, it'll be handicap available. And so what that means is, it's not restricted to handicap, um, but it's available for handicap, and that's how a lot of them are coming. Um, you can see from the, um, the action item, there's several cities in around, uh, New Ulm that have already installed them, Marshall, um, Springfield has one. So, yeah, it's, it's really a good deal, that, the only, um, expense that the P U C has is to, uh, get the primary wire to the transformer. We got a four-eighty, um, um, line right there, and, um, we do that for every one of our customers. So there's really no additional cost to the P U C.
One question I've got, I'm totally for the program, was this the number-one site, the only site proposed?
Um, no, that, we looked at several sites, the reason that we chose this one was because of that four hundred and eighty, um, kilovolts, um, line. You know, we looked at doing it down where the other one is, but we don't have, we only have two forty down there, and the expense to upgrade that would be too great.
And we don't across the street in a small lot here either, that capability?
Um, well, um, the reason we didn't necessarily look at that one was because of the number of lease parking there. Um, and with, I guess, with the, um, the way the infrastructure is, there's a vault, that's right where we're thinking to put it, so... But basically, the line would come in, go through the vault, hook up, come back out, and go right back, right back through the alley. So that was, that was pretty much the reason that we chose that.
And the other option, you know, the other reason, uh, I would say is that that's a much smaller parking lot, they have dentists, optometrists, hairstylists, so that lot is usually full for the businesses there. And having a reduced number of parking spots there, so again, you'd be losing five spots, you know, and only electric vehicles could park there, so you're limiting the number of customers for that area. Uh, and then any future development potentially in Retzloff, they use that parking lot as well, and so you don't want to limit that. This is a bigger parking lot next door to us that has some parking that we can.
Probably more visible, so visible to the tour, the people coming to town, yeah.
And, and one other thing, um, in the consideration was, um, the way this is going to be built, it has the ability to be added on, so we're not stuck with just what we're getting now. Um, we actually could, if, if this, you know, it's coming, you know, E V cars are coming, and so, um, we would have the opportunity to add another, uh, fast charging station if we so chose.
But in this location, we only have, we only have one stall, though, to add on, correct?
It's, actually, there's eight stalls in that location, and, um, so there would be two stalls that would be, um, available just for, one on each side, and we're not, we're, we're putting the infrastructure, actually, so far, this is the design that we, that's very preliminary right now, but... Um, the infrastructure would be put in the second stall, mainly because we want to have a buffer zone for people coming in, so they're not running into the transformer. And then, and then there would be a stall on the end that would be open yet for parking.
Okay.
Yep.
Chris, was the former, uh, behind the glockenspiel that the city owns that land, was that considered at all? For, or are we just keeping it for economic development opportunities?
One, that's one of the reasons, but it also is on the farther end of downtown, so it's a longer walk for someone to get to, uh, the downtown businesses, this is kind of central block, um, and they can go either way, um, so it was just a more centralized location.
Thanks for answering, it was just a question that I received.
During the week, when that parking lot's pretty full, that's going to push some people to find additional parking, right?
It could potentially, unless they have an E V car.
Is there a time limit on, uh, when they park with the electric vehicle, uh, is it a, is that have to be monitored for, during the day? Or is there a twenty-four hour limit on that, or?
Well, I think that there will be, there'll have to be some time limits put on it, um, especially on the fast charger, because we're not going to want to have a car that sits there, uh, for four hours, when you could potentially have another car coming in. So, um, some of those details we'll work out, um, and certainly talk to some of the other cities that we're dealing with. Zeph has put in a lot of these, so they'll know, you know, they'll know the type of signage and type like, that type of thing we'll need to put up.
I mean, I want to be welcoming to people to the community to use these stations, but yet want to be mindful that they don't get a ticket or something that they're, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and I think, you know, they also, the idea is, um, you know, we'll get this to the chamber, so that'll, hopefully, they can put that on their, on their website, so that is another way to draw people to New Ulm as well.
Those selected car people, they got their little apps, they know where every spot is.
They do, yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I think this is a great opportunity, like Chris said, there's, um, they're just popping up all over this opportunity of getting these free fast chargers that cost thirty to fifty thousand dollars to install. I mean, it's a great opportunity for our community to have, be, been selected for it. Um, so with that, I am going to offer... Um, is it a resolution?
Nope, just a motion.
I'll offer the motion, um, approving the allocation of five to six parking lot stalls, um, in the municipal lot in the corner of North and, North Broadway and Second North, for the E V fast charging station, um, through the Volkswagen mitigation settlement fund.
I'm going to second that, and then I've got one more question.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, go ahead.
Do they have a life expectancy, is it a five-year, ten-year for this?
Um, well, the, you know, obviously, technology changes so quickly. Um, the host agreement that we'll be signing has a, um, the contract goes, I believe it's a, a ten-year contract. After five years, we have, they have the option to, um, pull out if they don't, if they're not getting enough revenue, because they're the ones that are maintaining it, they're doing everything, um, but it is a ten-year, ten-year lease.
Well, just thinking aloud that we, you know, if we're going ahead with this, that we look at putting some money into a designated fund, that one day we're going to have to start rebuilding these or replacing them, and they're not going to be cheap, and if it's the future, that we set a fund up for that.
Okay.
Might do sense.
The P U C budget would love to do that.
I don't think so.
You know, in Alexandria, in their target parking lot, they have like, um, four Tesla fast chargers and, uh, standard fast charger, and then they also got one at the gas station, a Zeph one just went in. So they have, and five of them right there, and when you go there on the weekends, there's a one or two cars there quite often, charging, so. Kind of the wave of the future in the, in the thought process is, is that you got to get that charging infrastructure out there before you can get people to drive the cars, they got to be able to get where they.
And like Chris said, I think it'll draw people to the community and stuff, so it's good.
Yep.
Keeps our name on the map.
Yep. Any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Posse no, motion carries, good luck, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven point six, request to purchase of needed law enforcement riot gear and tasers. Dave?
President Schmitz, members of the council, um, here to talk about the request for council action, just basically going to start off by saying that I, uh, when I was wording that, I wish I would have put down tactical equipment, personal protective equipment versus riot gear. Um, that's, that's what it is, it's personal protective equipment. I fielded some calls, actually, several calls on it, and, um, when I talked to him about that it's personal protective equipment, and I just, you know, and I, I was just kind of inquiring, like, why? If you had a son or daughter in law enforcement, why wouldn't you want them to have protective gear? And they said, no, I'm absolutely for protective gear, I just don't want the riot gear, I don't, and so they were thinking it was, from talking with them, I think there's some, a lot of people that thought it was like grenade launchers, tear gas, rubber bullets, beanbag rounds, things like that. There's, there was nothing in this request about that, but again, they, members of the public, there was some concern, like, I'm not, you know, I don't know how many, but, but they had, when, when I had shared that with them, they had a, like, a completely different viewpoint from the, from the people I talked to. I took probably about six calls. So, um, it's personal protective equipment, if you want to, you know, when you examine everything that's in that, um, those quotes, if you think of it like it's basically football pads. if you think of it like it's basically football pads and a helmet, there's a shield. And then it, but the football helmets are basically, what the pads are, are designed to do is absorb the kinetic energy. So if something's thrown at us, or some, we're kicked or something like that, um, that it would absorb that, you know, versus our, our body part having to do that. It has multiple uses. You know, we don't, we use them for tactical building entries and, and so, I mean, it, it does have multiple uses. Um, we're probably not used a lot, but it's, it does have other uses. Um, the gas mask basically filters the air, which is, um, again, it's personal protective equipment. Again, there's multiple uses with that, but again, filtering the air. I used it, you know, I was trying to think of different times that I've used it. I can remember when we had, um, in 2001, when we had anthrax and, you know, they were concerned with, you know, people opening their letters and so on and so forth. At that time, somehow I got delegated to be the representative that got to open those letters.
Short, cut the short stick.
But, but ultimately, that's, that's when we used them. I wasn't the only person, but I was probably one of five. Um, a little more familiar with the gas mask because I'd been in the military. But if you think about it, you know, I'd just like to make a comparison. It's basically, it's personal protective equipment, like turnout gear for the fire department and 95 masks for ambulance and, and, uh, first responders. The, the taser purchase, which is, that's also included in that, um, that's not personal protective equipment, but it's, and we have tasers now. We don't have our own tasers. Like we, each officer isn't assigned a taser. And that's outside of what best practices is, but we've always, you know, they're expensive. Um, when we first got into them, we were like, well, purchase so many, not everybody's working at one time. And we can, we can rotate them through. And, and that's, that's actually worked, but again, it's not best practices. And it also leaves us in kind of a bad situation if we need all hands on deck. If we, and we've had a situation recently where we called everybody in, it's like, okay, who gets the taser, who doesn't? Because that's a less than lethal, um, force, and that's part of our force continuum. And, and it just puts us kinda in that situation, you know? Historically, we, we really didn't have those situations in my career where we were calling in every single person. And, you know, in the past, you know, we've, we've had this gear. It's actually replacement gear. Now, 2015 is when our, we had looked at it, the, the chief at the time, Chief Whelan and I had looked at it and were like, okay, this gear really needs to go. It was, it was really worn out. And that's the time that we had gotten rid of it, um, just because it wasn't, it wasn't effective anymore. The, the gas masks were all cracked and, and the, the pads and stuff, they were cracked as well. They were really worn out. And we, um, had really considered at that time, you know, when do we purchase more gear? And we're always trying to keep our, our budgets as flat as we can, and it's a big purchase. I mean, you, you look at the amount, it's not, it's not cheap. And, uh, for that reason, we were kinda kicking the can down the road. And we're thinking, you know, there's always something that comes up, and when we're having those budget discussions, it's like, you know, this year we need firearms, or this year we need 800 megahertz radials. And, you know, there's always something that comes up that's a larger, um, pro- project. And for that reason, we had delayed on, it wasn't a priority at that point. You know, we, we thought there was other priorities and we're just trying to, to budget accordingly. So, we had the, the last time we had the gear was 2015, so approximately five years ago. And, um, see, I'm just trying to, just made a few notes that I wanted to highlight on. That the lifespan is, the former stuff that we had, had, was 47 years old when we got rid of it. It was purchased in the, in the late 60s. And it had been used, and it had been used oftentimes, but it's not, it's not used on a monthly basis or on daily basis back then, nor today. You know, for the most part, it's gonna be likely sitting in the, in the supply room. But again, it, the last stuff lasted 47 years. The expected life for the gear right now, um, I've checked on it, I've talked, you know, to, to vendors, it's 25 years. That's reasonably speaking, we should get 25 years out of the gas mask, we should get 25 years out of the, the other equipment. And then, um, the expected life of the tasers, 10 to 12 years. There's really no, you know, 10 years is really what they say, and, you know, you, 12 years, you, sometimes you put that one, the one that's still working fine, you put that as a reserve, but 10 to 12 years approximately. And then, what we'd like to do with tasers is, and, and this had been budgeted and discussed before. In fact, I had brought this up with Mr. Dalton when I first became a chief, just talking about, you know, what some priorities are. And, you know, where I kinda see the direction of the department. And one thing is, I thought that we really needed to, to get more gear. Um, or equipment, it was just something that was, could be worked on. And, uh, this was part of that discussion as far as, you know, getting into the best practices, having every officer being assigned a, a taser. There's, you know, if, if it's ever deployed in situations like that, you can take that one out of service and you can grab another one versus, you know, having someone else get it handed over. And, and they all have memories in them, memory sticks and everything. But at the same time, the best practice for law enforcement that we have our own. So I was trying to improve in that area. Um, it's just, you know, I've only been as a chief a couple of years, but it, it just wasn't the priority. And we just had, you know, um, higher priorities at the time. So it, it was just something that was gonna kinda get, again, kicked down the road a little bit. I had really planned on doing it for next year, but we're really trying to keep everything flat. And now with, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a higher priority right now. You know, I, I think of like, you know, the N95 masks, we have them. They were older when we, when this COVID thing hit. It was a higher priority right now than it was a year ago. Same thing with, with this situation, you know, it's, I, back in June, um, I really felt I needed that gear, but it's like, well, we don't have it, it expired, it's, it's no longer with us. And, uh, you know, when you need it, you need it. As far as other departments, when I did some checking, pretty much all departments have their own assigned tasers, because it's best practices. And then as far as the protective equipment, the PPE, same thing. Um, the ones that didn't have it, same thing like with me, they're working with their councils and commissioners to, to order it, because they, they feel a need that they have to have it. When we're doing, um, in the future, you know, there's, you know, obviously social unrest every time we put on the TV. Um, we're seeing that, and that's, that is making this a higher priority. Having that said, do I really think it's, you know, do I have anything thinking that this is coming to New Ulm? No, I don't. I, I hope not. I don't think so. I think we have a, a strong community, and I don't necessarily expect that. However, even like if we do mutual aid, if we're assisting other agencies or they're assisting us in law enforcement, we really work in a collaborative effort to, to work with other people. We literally need this if we're responding. And I, I can think of the last time, I was, thinking the last time there was some type of, and when we think of sometimes like a riot, or we think of some type of social disturbance, you know, we, we think of like the biggest thing, like we're watching on TV or something, okay? But you think of like the Mankato, if you remember the riots that happened over there with, uh, several years ago, with, it, it happened like after a football game. And then things just got out of control. They were, you know, people were drinking and they needed help, mutual aid. We, we assisted them. Back then, we had the riot gear. And we, you know, we responded to that and they would respond to us if we needed assistance as well. And, you know, back in the, um, early 70s, they had, they literally had it, what they call a small riot, but they, you know, that's several years ago, but they, they used the gear back then. So, I mean, right now, obviously, um, I feel that it's a higher priority. But having that said, I really think it's probably gonna be sitting on a shelf the majority of the time.
Thank you, Dave. I guess I comment on it, I support you 100% on it. When you look at the numbers and the life expectancy of it, and to have the protective equipment, it's only costing us if we throw it away in 25 years and hopefully never used it. It's only $2,000 a year, and I think it's well worth $2,000 a year to protect our officers, so I definitely support it without a problem.
I'm gonna agree with President Schmitz. I mean, once, I'll admit, when I opened up my, uh, agenda, you know, riot gear, but once I did have it explained to me, the taser replacement, the tactical equipment it is, personal protective gear. And I, and also after telling some of our citizens that, explaining it to them, you know, this is not rubber bullets. This is not tear gas we're buying. It's the